Welcome to the Byram Hills Board of Education meeting on September 17th. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Okay, so we are missing tonight Ira and Mike, but we have a forum and so we're ready to conduct forward business. And the meeting was called to order at 7:02. The board met in executive session. We spoke about four items which I'll run through, one of which is an amendment to the original agenda and was added. So item 3.1 was legal matter, individual employee. 3.2 was legal matter, transportation. 3.3 district matter, administrative recruitment. And then 3.4 was legal matter, individual student, which was the amended item. With that, are there any comments from the public on items that are not on tonight's agenda? Hearing none. I would ask for a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening amended for the additional executive session item.
So moved.
All in favor? Okay, motion carries. And then I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda for personnel, special services, and for business.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, so with the approval of that consent agenda, I just wanted to point out two items that are of special importance. First off, a $1,000 donation that we received from Armon Children's Corner. We appreciate that. They're in Comen Hill and they provide services to the community. And we're very pleased that they found it in their heart to donate money to us. And then secondly, we accepted a $25,000 donation from the Byram Hills Education Foundation, and this money will be for this school year to fund potential Insta grants that come up, which are grants that come from the faculty and administration of Byram Hills. They're smaller grants that teachers may find a need for, and then the board at the Education Foundation determines on a case-by-case basis whether to use some of those funds to fund those projects. So we're pleased and excited to once again accept this money, and we appreciate all that the BHGF does for us. And as a segue to that, I'm just going to ask that we move item 10.2, which is also related to the Education Foundation, as the next item on the agenda, so just going a bit out of order, just so we can have continuity around the BHGF. And we have Jason Berlin here with us tonight, who is the current Chair of the BHGF. And item 10.2 is related to a different type of grant, which is a larger grant that typically on an almost virtually annual basis, the foundation has been incredibly philanthropic to our district and has funded, you know, very large projects that have made a significant difference to all the four buildings. And every time we toured the schools at the beginning of September and we go through the buildings, it's just so crystal clear, all of those, you know, collective impacts that the foundation has had through the years, whether it's the technology program or really so many of the programs that we have hitting every grade level from kindergarten all the way up to our seniors. So with that, and to talk about this year's proposed grant, maybe turn it over first to Jen?
Yes, that would be great. First, to all of our listeners and to Jason especially, the amount of time that the Education Foundation spends really supporting the goals of the district is outstanding. I like it because we talk about what direction the schools are moving, and the Education Foundation is receptive, asks questions that lead us down the road to really enhancing the programs that we have. For example, in this direct giving campaign, the grant is called Wellness for Life. And while last year, the Education Foundation helped us to engage in this partnership with Stanford University in assessing our students, giving them a survey and assessing what their needs are, how much time are they spending on homework, and who do they feel supported by in the schools, and how much sleep are they getting, and what are their extracurricular obligations? Now, the BHGF is helping us to move a step further in looking at those survey results with Stanford University and having professionals come to our district to work in groups. That involves sending some of our high school teachers, administrators, and parents and students out to Stanford University to partake in some group work out there that they are bringing back to the district and turnkey, having professionals come from Stanford to sit and look at our results and help us to assess whether we need to make changes in school. So many times you'll hear, oh, school start times, or oh, there's too much homework, you know, you'll hear people complain, and those are anecdotal complaints. And while very valuable as one tool, we now have data to support any kinds of changes that we're making. And we can't make those changes by ourselves in a vacuum. We do really rely on professionals who can ascertain what our results are telling us to help us with our next set of goals. So at the middle school and the high school, we're very excited to continue that partnership with Stanford University and to really look at what needs to, if anything, be changed in our schools so that we can maintain that level of rigor, but that level of support for students that a decade ago was not important. We weren't really caring about children, not that we weren't caring about children's mental health, but it wasn't on a radar for us. We weren't seeing the implications of this intense rigor on our children. And now, it's starting to come into focus. It's become very acceptable for us to look at it and explore it and support our kids in this endeavor. So without the BHGF, I don't know how we would do that. So you are giving us the capacity to work with these students and give them the tools that they need so that we can maintain that rigor for them and their success. I have had the pleasure of sitting on the BHEF board and watching their interactions and their work, and it is multi-leveled, multi-layered, incredible group of professionals whose endeavor is to help all children in the district. So from all of us, we are very grateful, and Jason and Shari spend an inordinate amount of time on that. So thank you very much, Jason.
Any comments, Jason?
Briefly.
Sure.
On behalf of the entire foundation, I'm just really thrilled to be here in front of the Board of Education as you consider accepting this grant, which is Phase Two, as you all know, of our Wellness Initiative. Last year, the community was just overwhelmingly in support of this grant, and to be able to roll out Phase Two of the Wellness for Life Initiative, where the district will now be equipped to really go a level deeper with the Stanford Success Challenge, the data that was gathered, and like you said, Jen, to really, you know, analyze that data and how that will affect our children, I'm just beyond thrilled that we're here right now and you're considering this grant. I just want to say, this is my fourth year as Chairman of the Foundation, and in all the years I've been on the board, I'm most excited about this grant and the impact that it can have and will have on our students. So thank you all so much.
We appreciate you being here tonight. And when you think about the fact that what the BHGF does for us, the budget is difficult, it's difficult within the natural budget cycle to incorporate significant change into the district because of the environment that we're in, because of pressure on obviously keeping taxes as reasonable as possible, which is our fiscal responsibility. And the BHGF really allows us to make those changes on the margin, those innovative programs that are difficult to fund out of the budget. That incremental change really adds up when you compound it year after year after year. So again, we appreciate it. And I open it up now to anyone who has any comments on the matter.
I mean, when I talk to friends in other districts, they don't have anything like this. I just, I hope that someday our children have the exposure to understand the gifts that they've been given by this district and by the BHGF, because really, without you guys and your support, we would not be able to provide them with some of these amazing programs that they're, you know, that other kids are just not getting. I mean, it's really, it's incredible. Thank you.
Thank you for keeping us cutting edge. I mean, many of us on the board know firsthand how much hard work goes into the BHGF, and every single person on the BHGF should be commended for all their hard work. And on that note, people don't forget to go to the Wizards game this week.
Friday.
I will be the coach.
It's one of their, it's a big fun return. It's a lot of fun, but without the funds, they can't keep us cutting edge. So thank you very much.
Friday, this Friday, the 21st, 7 o'clock, the high school, correct?
Correct.
And tickets will, can still be bought at the door right?
The game time.
Okay. I just want to echo also, I mean, obviously, the Education Foundation, the people there on there are phenomenal, and thank you to the community that supports the Education Foundation, because without that, we wouldn't have the donations, right?
So with that, I would ask for a motion to approve the two grants from the BHGF, Wellness for Life, HCC $25,800, and then Wellness for Life, the high, at the Byram Hills High School, $32,922, for a total of $58,722.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
With gratitude, we pass the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
All right, so we go on to our next agenda item. And in the spirit of trying to be responsive to some of our guests, why don't we next talk about item 10.1 to complete new business for the evening. 10.1 is the vetting process. And just to remind everybody and to give a bit of context, this is the vetting process for policy 7500, which is naming facilities, funds, and events. This is in response to an open letter that the board originally received back in January of 2018 from Matthew Gable, who's class of 71, proposing the high school theater be named after former teacher Gene Bissell. The board has received a significant number of communications regarding Mr. Bissell, and in deliberating about this request, we had made the determination last school year that we needed to revisit the policy on naming, because it had been a very long time since that policy had been looked at. And so we went through that process last year. We revised the policy. We also came up with a set of procedures for vetting so that a potential request like this gets vetted through a very thoughtful process, and we've been embarking on that process for vetting. I would note that in order to vote on this matter, according to our policy, we need to have the full board present, and we are missing two board members tonight. So I would just open it up to my fellow board members to just have a quick discussion of what we should do tonight versus what we may want to postpone to a meeting when we're all present. We also have a guest here in the audience that would like to speak, and so we can certainly do that as well. But maybe just first have a discussion of what we should do tonight versus what we should move to next meeting.
In my opinion, and we've been talking about this as a board for a long time, it's not a critical issue that needs to be resolved tonight. My preference would be to wait till everybody's here, because I feel like you put so much work into the spending process, I'd love us all to be here to be able to talk about it together, especially since we can't vote on it until everybody's here. So that would be my opinion.
I'm going to echo what you said.
That is sensible.
Yeah, I agree, and since we, you know, before we even speak about it tonight, I'd like to hear what, you know, the person has to say, I think.
That's great. Okay, so I think that makes sense as a plan, so we'd love to invite our guest to speak. And feel free to join us here. And just to remind you of some quick processes that we have for public input. We just ask that you state your name and address and organization if represented, and then feel free to direct your comments to me, and I can open it up to the other board members too, if they have any follow-up questions or anything that they want to comment on after we, here you give your words.
Yes, I'm Joan Ross Storkin. I live in Scarsdale, and I actually am not a graduate of Byram Hills. I was a graduate in White Plains, where Gene Bissell first came as a young teacher. And he came when I was in seventh grade in White Plains, and probably stayed in White Plains for five, six years. But I knew him, I was in all the shows, you know, just like the kids here, you know. And so I was actually recruited to be part of the initiative for the naming of the theater here at the high school, the Gene B. Bissell Theater. And I think the idea that I want to communicate, and oh, and by the way, I'm here to stand in for Beth Cohen, who has been speaking with Superintendent Lamia. She met with her in August about this, and as you know, you received information back in January. Since that time, by the way, there's just been an outpouring of grassroots, a grassroots effort. Over 120 people, and I've given Superintendent Lamia the list of people who have vocally supported this. I mean, just to find these people, you know, that many people for a, you know, small little issue, it's not about taxes, right? I come from Scarsdale, I know about that. So, you know, there's a huge outpouring of interest and support for this initiative. And I just would love to just review very briefly sort of what our main points are. Because, you know, I see right here, you've got, you know, creating the leaders of the next generation, your motto. Well, the whole point of naming something after someone, you know, is you think that person is really important, that person really influenced lives, changed lives. Well, there's, as I said, there's this outpouring of support, and every single one of these people say, Gene Bissell changed their life. Gene Bissell changed my life. I am a playwright, I am a musical theater writer, and an opera librettist, and I would not do that if I hadn't met Gene Bissell. I actually stayed in touch with him during my whole adult life, and we collaborated together on a musical that was based on his original musical, Mandy, that was done here at Byram Hills. It was actually written when we were in White Plains, and I was in that show twice. So there's just, there's great love for Gene Bissell in White Plains, probably in Valhalla, where he went after, and then he came to Byram Hills for almost 20 years. And I was at his retirement party, which was huge. I mean, just, so it is a demonstration that, you know, people really felt that he was a beloved teacher. Now, what's the main thing is that he built the theater program here at Byram Hills. And, you know, having, I live in Scarsdale, and we even know that the theater program at Byram Hills is extraordinary. And that tradition, that legacy is because of Gene Bissell, and everybody is standing on his shoulders today. And we think that the people here, the benefits to the people, the community, the students, the future students, they have pride in their school. They have pride in their high school. And they can see the name of Gene P. Bissell up there, you know, above the theater, if the naming goes through. And I think that is a great tribute, because it shows that someone of great character, I mean, he influenced people beyond the music and theater program. He was a music teacher, you know, he taught choir and so forth. But it was beyond that. It was about character. It was about inclusiveness in the days that you didn't talk about that. And he was inclusive. And there's so many things about Gene Bissell. I just want to read this one little paragraph that's in some of the papers that I gave another packet of things that Superintendent has already, but just putting it all together, and hopefully that can be distributed. "Gene P. Bissell was an extraordinary music and choir teacher, theater director, mentor, and friend to the students and community of Byram Hills for nearly 20 years. He had an outsized transformational impact on so many students. In short, he was once the generation of a loved teacher. During his BHS tenure, that was 1968 through 87, he created a joyful love of music and the theater among his students and district families. Through his boundless energy in pursuit of perfection, he also motivated students to achieve the highest standards of excellence, helped them find their voices within and beyond the stage, became an enduring inspiration to all of them. Teamwork, tenacity, creativity, self-discipline, hard work, resilience, never settling for good enough were his touchstones. And he became invaluable lifelong lessons, oh, and those became invaluable lifelong lessons for the adolescents then and the adults they would become. Before diversity, inclusion, or safe space were part of the lexicon, Mr. Bissell made everyone feel as if he or she belonged by seeking out and binding together a wide variety of students irrespective of gender, orientation, ethnic, or socioeconomic background, academic record, or social fleet. He created a welcoming social framework for all. As a result, his students experienced extraordinary camaraderie and mutual support, and many of those friendships have endured for 40 to 50 years." This will be, this 2018 will be the anniversary, the 50th anniversary of when Gene Bissell came here. So it's very fitting that you would name the theater after him. So I want to thank you, and I hope that others can come up when you, when you actually, if you do, you know, move this to the next date. I know there's other people in the community who would like to speak to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time. Anybody have any comments or questions? We appreciate the outpouring of information to help support the process, and it's great when the history comes alive through, obviously, someone who has had a tremendous impact on a lot of our alumni and even folks that aren't, that are connected to them. So thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate it.
As a note, Beth Cohen has been a great point person and collaborator with me on this vetting process. She's delightful, and she selected somebody really good to come in her place tonight. So thank you for that.
And so then on a subsequent agenda, when we have our full board, we will get the full download of the information from the vetting process and then have a board discussion and then determine whether it's at that meeting or depending on what the board wants to do at a subsequent meeting, vote on the matter.
Thanks.
All right, so with that, we go back to item nine on the agenda.
Do you want to take a break in case?
Oh, sure. Yeah, we'll take a two-minute break. It's a good idea.
A two-minute break so you could exit.
Everybody's welcome to stay up, but you're also welcome to, yeah.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Item nine, which is unfinished business of the board, and it is our board goals, 9.1. So we had a discussion at the last meeting, and there was a bunch of, you know, very good suggestions. Now we've gone back to revise the board, revise the board goals with some of those suggestions, and maybe, Jen, do you want to walk through some of the changes, then we can have a discussion?
So we spoke about, just to recap a little bit, about having some main goals and then many bullets that could fall underneath each of these goals that might vary from year to year, but keeping the focus of our goals the same from year to year. One, excellence in teaching and learning. Second, one fiscal accountability and communications. The third being leadership development and succession planning. Fourth being education reform and advocacy. And then a fifth recommendation was made, a great recommendation for security. So I'll start back from the first goal, excellence in teaching and learning. And I think that two of the revisions were the request to add in our introductory phrase that will exist from year to year likely. The board will encourage effective practices to support excellence in teaching and learning through dialogue with the administration, policy development implementation, and this added part, a review cycle of existing programs and support for student success. And that review cycle of existing programs is really just to say, if we're demonstrating excellence in teaching and learning, let's go through the cycle of existing programs to see how we're doing that, which makes a lot of sense as a board. And then for the paragraph underneath that, the last line was added, "The board will continue to encourage a review of data to monitor progress toward these goals." Remember that we were talking about data being a very significant part of the work that we're doing as a board, the work that the board is doing. So that is for excellence in teaching and learning. Did anybody have any questions or comments about the addition of those two items?
No, I just, can I just ask one quick question, just about what we just added with the review cycle of existing programs? So that would kind of be like when Tim, when you do the curriculum conversations that is where that would be captured, right? When you're giving us updates on what's happening in curriculum?
Other curricular areas and other updates as needed. For example, when we talked a lot last, over the past couple of years about the math program and changes in the math program, it's all part of the normal continuous improvement cycle when it comes to curricular areas. It's a way for the board to keep focused on all of the curriculum, not just the ones listed on the goals.
So it's what we've been doing, it's just capturing that, that we're doing it.
Right.
I think it previously was worded in a way that sounded like it was focusing on the new programs, and we wanted to make sure there was an ongoing focus on the existing programs as well.
Anybody else have anything in this? I just have one thought about the student wellness paragraph. I think it makes sense the way it is, but my question would be, should we add just one sentence to that that says something like, "The board will explore the issue of school start times," not necessarily because we're going to immediately and very quickly come to a conclusion, because it's a complicated issue, it has a lot of different layers to it, it has potential budgetary implications, but just to begin the process of exploring some of these issues so that we just have better knowledge of what's involved and the pros and the cons, and just begin that dialogue. So that would be my one question as to whether or not maybe that's something we should add.
I'm very comfortable with that, because I feel that that's actually a very concrete goal that we can explore this year, so I would be comfortable with adding that.
Scott, is that timely considering where they are with the larger county discussion?
So, you know, it's, there's definitely still a county discussion going on. I would say that it may be a little bit slower in terms of, it's not clear when exactly there might be a forum that was talked about last year where there would be, you know, from the association, a little bit more information that comes out about these issues across a wide variety of schools. Obviously, if that happens, it's going to make it a lot easier, because one of the many issues is athletics, and that involves other districts, and just as we have more minds thinking about these issues, the better off, you know, we are in terms of information. But it's not clear. It's just not totally clear whether they're going to do it this year. So I figure we should start to look at it, but again, I'm not setting the expectation that there's a decision coming, but rather that we at least start with the issues.
Well, I think we start with the Stanford success results.
That's right.
Right? To see, like, what is it telling us about our children's sleep? What is it telling us about?
Absolutely.
And we also have some of the districts that have done it.
Yes.
Within the last year or two, we can start exploring how it's working for them.
Yes, and there also are, there are a couple of districts, one in particular I can think of not too far from here, that really did analyze very closely and decided not to do it. So we, I think there are a lot of data points out there that we can learn from.
We did talk about this, I want to say, three years ago, maybe off by a year, so we can go back and pull out those meeting notes, because Bill did some work on this. So we have some numbers, and maybe those.
The numbers were transportation costs.
Right. That was where the big.
So we could look at that too, because it is important. And I think that's why we didn't do anything bad at the time.
That is why. It was, I want to say, a million and a half or something around there.
At least.
But we should look at that again, because there may be other ways. And we just need to be prepared, because if we do county-wise, whatever, move forward, at least we know what we're dealing with. We all feel like we have good information to move forward on if we want to.
Yeah, that's a good one. Okay. The next is fiscal accountability and communications, and it was really just to number what the study will include for our budget study, review of our five-year budget projections. All of it pretty much is the same as it was before, just numbered, so that we're very careful that we're ticking off each of these. But the last one was added, review of fund balance and debt maturities. So what is our fund balance, and when is this debt that we have going to mature, and what do we need to do about that?
I think on the last draft, fund balance was a separate bullet, but at the end of the day, it's really integral in looking at the five-year plan and thinking about the budget, so it just seemed like it made a lot of sense here.
And then, not dissimilar from the excellence in teaching and learning, the efficiency review, but looking at a cycle to review specific department and building fiscal efficiency. You know, we, Jim this year was looking at per pupil costs, right? So we start to look at per pupil costs, and that might actually drive us to say, well, what are our highest areas of the per pupil, and are we most efficient in those areas when it's targeting per pupil costs? Any questions or comments about those?
That's good.
And then leadership development and succession planning will remain as a board goal. We have to really start supporting the development of internal candidates. I've stated in the past that this was done during my time as a teacher. It is the reason why I'm your superintendent, and so we really should be exploring this again, or I would still be teaching Tom Sawyer in seventh grade, maybe not that anymore. But that leadership development from within is important. We have an excellent net and have really pulled some outstanding outside administrators into our district. We have also cultivated quite a few very strong people from within, so we'd like to continue and force that.
Right around. Actually, it's Gina, it's Tim, it's me, and Jim's the outside net that we pulled in.
It's important, because we have our own culture that's incredibly different than every other school. We have mentors, we have so much support that you don't hear about in other schools. It's nice to foster from within, because they already know the culture. It's helpful.
It also says a lot about who we hire, that we're hiring great people.
That's right.
If they're in a position to move up.
And there are times where people are aligning themselves, internal candidates, to these positions, and we choose candidates from the outside. It has to be whoever is best for that position. But we have to still cultivate that from within. We have some very strong people. So there are no changes there. And number four, education reform and advocacy. We had talked about shared services as another thing to add, and a T- We had talked about shared services as another thing to add and a TRS reserve. You know, this is the thing that keeps coming up to the plate and then retreating, but districts like ours would benefit immensely from a TRS reserve. So, any way that we can continue advocacy in that area would be beneficial. Any questions about that? Okay, and last, security. Thank you, Robyn. And I think Larry, you were on that too. Board will continue its commitment to focus on district security and cybersecurity, so both of those, including, one, a review guidance issued by New York State Ed to be addressed by June 2019; two, to support increased surveillance at all buildings through the installation and monitoring of additional cameras; three, to support SROs in the school full-time. As you know, we have two SROs; four, to support additional after-school security staff for sporting events. This is something new to this year; five, support continued district-wide safety training, which some has already occurred and more is unfolding in the next two months with Gina; six, assessing prevention strategies that protect the data assets of the district. We really have to have an intense focus on cybersecurity; the development of procedures to respond to data breaches; and lastly, but not least, continue training for staff on IT security and awareness, including monitoring of third-party storage and applications. That's an area where we strive to make sure that we are aligned. We have a lot of applications and a lot of third-party storage and we have to make sure that all of our information is safeguarded at all times.
Two questions. The second SRO, was that, has that been announced to the community?
No, I will be sending a message update and I will be having principals' coffees. The second principal's coffee will be a security update. So, we'll share that information before then.
My other question is, I don't know if it's appropriate to put it on here at this point, but there was communication about some potential discussion of bus, additional bus security. There was an email.
There was an email that was talking about bus cameras that actually catch people who are passing by a bus when a bus has its stop sign out and it's lever across. So, we, I've looked into that with the North Castle Police Department. We're actually not sure how much they can enforce what they catch on those cameras. You know, is it set up like a red light camera? That's something that they would have to investigate. We can't really just turn that over to them and them issue tickets. I guess there's a question of who the driver of the vehicle is because it's, I guess, it's a violation and you can't tell. It's registered to someone, but it's my aunt who was borrowing the car, whatever the case may be. So, the police said that they would be willing to look into that if we thought it was such a pervasive problem here. I have not heard it as such a pervasive problem here. I mean, one time is a problem.
Right.
But the cost to actually input those into the cameras, not knowing how much the police can enforce it in a town like ours is...
So, not appropriate to add it to this at this point?
No. I think this is well-developed and I thank you so much for giving a thorough, your thorough attention to it. I have a question about, I don't know if the legal ramifications are there. You guys would, you would know more. What about monitoring like social media, like, or as it pertains to our children, like cyber safety in that respect, not just information going out, but what information is? So, anything that goes through our servers?
Is already protected, right?
We have that.
Yeah.
We have monitors. So, certain words that come up immediately gets flagged and gets sent to the principal and the assistant principal in the school and Andrew Taylor, so...
So, that's already in place?
That's happening for not only, you know, any kid who's using our server. It's outgoing and it's incoming.
Okay.
So, yeah, here we are. It is sort of part of wellness and I think we capture that all in policy and procedure.
Okay.
That's right.
Because I know we vetted that policy in detail.
It was about two years ago. Or last year. It was recent.
Yeah, I think, yeah. I mean, I think we did it again. We revised it.
That's fair, but yeah.
But I think, I think for this particular one, for the goal for us, it's what's happening within our school as far as our data.
Right.
And the wellness, the safety of the people that are in our buildings and around our events.
You know, security was such a hot topic last year. It was of everything that happened. And I think it's important for us to call out the fact that we heard you and we responded because I think that, you know, people are questioning why the wall, why the white fences were put up. I think we need to remind people that you asked for this stuff and we responded. You asked for additional, an additional SRO. We've given you an extra full-time person.
And that wasn't only on us. That was in collaboration with the town.
With the town, absolutely.
The towns responded as well.
Thank you very much to our town board.
Absolutely. But I think it's important that we remind them that we've, that we heard them and that we've, we have responded.
Which I will before I have those principals' coffees. That's the time to do it. Right now, you will know that if I sent out any kind of email about security in the past two weeks, nobody would have read it. You're trying to figure out your kid's bus route. You're trying to, so there will be a time for all of that.
But you did at the end of last year.
I did.
You did give us the end of the calendar.
And not only have we responded, you've been very proactive.
Yes.
There's stuff that you're doing that the town shouldn't know about because it's the safety of our community, our children, our most precious commodity. And you've done a great job of keeping what needs to be private, private, but we know you're always on top of security.
And maybe they need to be reminded of that too, that we can't tell them everything that we're doing.
Right.
But there is a lot that's being done.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this is really well-crafted and comprehensive and it gets to these two issues of physical security and cybersecurity. And it's really been an ongoing process over many, many years and it will continue to be clearly, but I think just given where we are in the world of data security and then unfortunately, in the world of physical security, this is just a really important thing to have and we'll continue to be very focused on it in every way.
And I appreciate, you know, that we have this spelled out this way because it shows that we are being proactive as opposed to reactive in this whole area. I believe that's pretty important. And there's so much that happens that doesn't get put on the list of eight things. Gina and I met with Rob Kastagna today. Gina is conducting a meeting with the SROs, the assistant principals at the high school, Rob Kastagna, and our two new NJV security who will be helping us with after-school events. And they will be turnkeying a training to all of the after-school event supervisors. That's stuff that doesn't even make it on here on a daily basis.
We appreciate that so much.
But I guess, yeah, but by having this goal here in front of our board, that's the stuff that will at least be on top, will, will hear because, you know.
I think it looks great. It's the second goal.
But we're not going to vote.
So, yeah, on that front, so given that we don't have two board members present and it would be ideal to have the full board be comfortable with the goals that we move forward with, yeah, we propose that maybe we just wait until next meeting and make the change that we suggested. Otherwise, it seems like it's in very good shape, but this way they can have a chance to ask any questions too, if they have any comments or prospective edits. And then hopefully with their input, we can at the next meeting vote.
Yep.
Does that sound good?
Really good.
All right.
Really well done.
Thank you so much.
So, that brings us to item 11, staff reports.
Jen again. All right. So, first, just a little enrollment, just a small report for tonight, but an enrollment update. We are, as of opening day enrollment on September 4th, we were at 2,312 students. Last year at this time, we were at 2,358 students. So, it's, this is what we anticipated from the demographer's report. However, what's interesting is that the demographer, our numbers were a little bit off, which they would be, right? But in Coman Hill, we were actually 22 students less than what we thought. At Wampus, eight students less, but at HCC, you were correct, we were 15 students to the positive. And at the high school, eight students to the positive. So, that's just, you know, very similar numbers to what the demographer gave us, just skewed as per building.
And it's not a whole class.
It's not a whole class. It's the coming and going. Exactly. So, that is enrollment and just some great student highlights. Here we go. The school year has started and the student highlights are ready to begin. I want to point out that we, today was our ninth actual day of classes and I already have student highlights.
That's wonderful.
Cheers to our kids, right? So, we have the 2019 Byram Hills High School National Merit semifinalists. These are chosen, students are chosen based on scores from last year's preliminary SAT. It was taken by 1.6 million high school juniors. And the children who are making this National Merit semifinalist list represent less than 1% of US high school seniors. And that is Alan Chang, Josh Friedman, Elise Canner, Elise Canner's mother, Emma Lucino, David McDaniel, Jonah Schwam, and Nicole Tiso. So, congratulations to these students.
Outstanding accomplishment.
Outstanding. We had seven semifinalists last year too, if I remember correctly.
Different ratio of boy, girl, then.
Oh, I didn't happen to notice. Nice. Okay, well, at least we're balancing out. And another exciting announcement, all-state musicians from Byram Hills. Last year, we had over 6,500 sophomores and juniors across the state who auditioned for a seat in one of the all-state music ensembles. Students who auditioned prepared a Level 6 selection, which if your child ever did NISMIA, you'll know is the most difficult. They performed the selection for an adjudicator at a local New York State School Music Association festival. And in addition to the performance, they were asked to sight-read a selection on their instrument. Based on their hard work, preparation, and performance, students were offered a seat or an alternate seat in one of the ensembles. So, I'm pleased to announce 1819 school year, all-state musicians from Byram Hills who were asked either to have a seat or be an alternate. Charlotte Cohen, soprano, Shay Gordon, Megan Wang, Isabel Elan, Brent Pearlman, and Jake Wild. And these students will be representing us at the NISMIA Winter Convention in Rochester and will be performing at the Kodak Hall of the Eastman Conservatory of Music. So, congratulations to our music educators through the district and to these outstanding, outstanding performers. It's pretty outrageous. And I think that is all I have to report, except that we are, between now and our next board meeting, we are going to have, excuse me, one second. On the 26th, 27th, 28th, and 29th at Byram Hills, we will be having homecoming games under the lights. That will be before our next board meeting, so I encourage any board members to go and attend that. We are renting lights. We understand that lights on the field is a very expensive proposition for district, our district, but we understand also that kids really enjoy that opportunity to play under the lights on their own fields. So, every varsity team will have an opportunity to play during that four-night segment. And that is also homecoming weekend. Very big deal here. And that is all I have to report.
Congratulations to the student who came to you with that idea.
I know. It's great. And Tim?
I have a brief report to give you and should you adopt your more goals, this will be an update to goal number three on leadership development. So, I'm a little bit ahead of your goals. But that's the timing of my work compared to the timing of your work. So, I had to get started on this.
You might add a bullet after you...
So, you're doing a great job on the goals you would have asked.
Or you can cross it off the list because it's already done.
There you go. So, as I start this, let me just go under the premise that we believe that leadership matters. For a strong organization, for a high-performing organization, you must have strong leaders. And for a school district that has high-performing students, where student success is high, you need the leadership to maintain those results. So, that is the premise of our belief about leadership in Byram Hills. So, first, let me talk about things we currently do that support building the leadership capacity of our administrative team. We have our administrative council meetings and during our meetings, we're always working toward developing their leadership capacity. We will read text together. We will have protocols and due processes where we problem-solve together and develop the skills of problem-solving. We work toward their goals each year and we help each other work toward goals. So, we do things during our council meetings that help build leadership. In our supervisory meetings, when Jen and Gina and I meet with those we supervise, we also use that as an opportunity to help people develop their leadership capacity. We've talked about our administrative retreat as well, where we develop leadership. And then at times, I will bring teams of leaders together to attend workshops with them and there are opportunities for us to learn together. And then some leaders take courses. And there's been some examples of those taking some coursework to develop their own capacity. So, we want to add a new, a new structure to this that we're going to pilot this year and it's going to be in executive coaching. So, for the past two years, I've been doing some research on executive coaching and think it would be a valuable process. And I myself decided to go through it as part of my own study to see what it was like so I could understand if this was valuable. So, let's talk about first, why executive coaching, besides the fact that it does matter. We know that leadership matters. From the Wallace Foundation study, and this is one that's cited a lot, and there's a lot of other research in leadership in schools, that we know that leadership is one of the most important things next to classroom instruction that connects to student learning. We also know leadership is hard, that we have to really help leaders because when we're doing the type of ambitious things that we're doing in Byram Hills, we know that takes a lot of energy and effort on the part of the leader to do that work and that it can be really difficult and taxing. If we don't have strong leaders to do that and we don't work on developing those leaders, then that work doesn't get done. And so, we know it's hard to do leaders. And a book we're reading now as an administrative team by Kuzis and Posner, talk about this notion that to be a leader, you have to learn constantly and that, that leading is learning. And if you're not learning, you're probably not continuing to develop as a leader. And so, overall, why executive coaching? It's really so the individuals can get to know themselves as leaders and that improves their capacity to lead. So, what is executive coaching? What that is, is a process to help people develop the skills of leadership through things like, they're working with a coach who will give them real-time feedback. So, you may be going through a process, say you're working toward your goal, the coach can help you think through those situations. It's also a place with an expert in coaching to experiment with ideas and go through exercises on how to think about a situation and maybe gain perspective on very complex issues. And, you know, it's one way of helping, the other piece about an executive coach that they offer is some expertise in particular areas. So, while we all try to do our best internally to help develop it, sometimes it helps to bring an outsider in who might have an area of expertise and a new lens that we may not have. So, while we do have a particular culture in Byram Hills that we value, someone else may just hold up a mirror that gets us to see something a little differently. This will also be a confidential place as a sounding board. Someone just may be working through some issues and not quite have it figured out. And before maybe they talk with us deeper, they may want to have someone else to bounce those ideas off of. And the benefits of it, we believe in what the research says, that it increases one's self-awareness and self-confidence as a leader. It helps them not only refine their skills in leadership, but develop new ones. It helps develop their ability to solve problems, helps them gain insights and perspectives into challenging situations or problems they're encountering, or into theirself, or the people they're working with. And overall, what we're looking to do is develop people's capacities to be strong leaders. And then finally, how will we implement this? So, first of all, it has to be someone who's ready and willing to do it. So, that was what we would ask for. And then we would think that someone is ready for this, to take on, having a coach as well. For this pilot study, I presented this at our retreat this summer and asked individuals if they were interested in having a coach to, to meet with me. And we talked about why they might want to coach and is this the right time for them? Are they ready for it? And then the idea is that I would pair them up with a coach. So, I've been developing a cadre of experts who can be coaches.
External?
Both, well, yeah, all external, all external. And those coaches could come from people within the region who might be retired administrators who have learned the art of coaching. Or there's some, some, one case I have a research professor from Columbia. In another case, I have someone from Stanford who's an entrepreneur who works in this field. So, I try to develop an array of people with different types of expertise. And then I try to match that up. So, I talk to the administrator, I learn what they're interested in, what they're thinking about, and I try to find a good match, both in terms of content as well as who I think would be a good personality match for that person. And the expectation is that they would meet with that person at least one time a month. Some coaches like to front-load it and meet more often upfront and then maybe get less frequent as the year progresses. So, it just... So it just varies. They have meetings. They decide together what the goals are going to be that they're going to work on. And then they will work toward those goals throughout the year. At the end of the year, have a debrief on what they've learned. What I will do to evaluate this is I'll meet with the administrators two times throughout the year minimum. Some people ask if they could talk to me all the time about it, which is fine. But minimally, I'll meet at mid-year and at the end of the year to ask...
How millennial of them.
Right, it is. They're like, "Am I allowed to talk about this to you? Because you said it's confidential." I said, "If you want, you can share, but you don't have to." So I'll ask them about the degree to which they feel that coaching is helping them, what they feel they're learning from the coach. Do they feel this is an effective process for us? And try to get a sense whether this is a model that will work in Byram Hills to develop...
So will the goals be customized depending on what they want to work on? Somebody that want to work on managing up. Some might work on interpersonal skills of a different sort.
Yeah, because I... You know, it's going to be different for every person. You know, things we do as a council, we try to tailor some of that. But we try to come up with some things together to work on as a district. But for coaching, I think it's very personal on what they want to learn.
So the evaluation will be with the administrator, not with the coach?
I'll debrief with the coaches as well on that. They tend to give me feedback. They like to check in with me. You know, some of them will say, "Oh, I've met with this person already three times and it's going well." But I ask them that. I tell them it's confidential as well. They shouldn't be sharing things with me. Let that be up to the administrator. But I do want to ask them how they felt about the process.
How the process of role is going.
How can you quantify how it's working out? Are you going to like stop in and see what they're doing in schools? How... Aside from them coming to you twice a year, how are you going to be able to quantify if it's making an impact? I don't...
No, it's a great question.
I don't think you can quantify it, but I think...
Qualitatively, I think we can describe if there's changes. I mean, we work closely with all the administrators and evaluate them. So we may be having our own indicators of how we evaluate them and whether we see...
And maybe doing 360s.
Yeah, you could do something like that. I mean, that's something for maybe we think about a little bit is how are we evaluating their growth? Whether we think from an outside perspective it's valuable as opposed to just internal reporting or self-reporting.
Is there a cost associated with this or the coaches volunteers?
Sure, no, they're not volunteers. They get paid. So there is a cost.
The goodness of the heart. We give them all of us.
Maybe an intern who's going to coach her for the first time. Although I do put pressure on people to try to get good deals. So I always negotiate and I've learned to do that. So we have eight people being coached right now. And the cost associated with that is $33,000. One-third of that I'm using title grant money for, which we can use for leadership development. So it's costing us about $22,000 for eight people. To do executive coaching, I think, is really cost-effective.
And is this within the professional development budget?
Yes.
Or within that budget?
Comes from my staff development budget.
And the audience that you went out to for this? Is it any administrator or is it principals, assistant principals, department heads?
Yeah, right now, we did for our administrative council. So all 23 folks. And I... You know, we described what this was and some people came to me. And some people, we thought, you know, maybe this isn't the year to do it. You have a lot on your plate. I tend to think about tenured. If, you know, they're tenured administrators first as well. Because when you're non-tenured, I think you have a lot of things to be working on and that process alone is pretty intense. So we were looking at our tenured administrators and those who felt readiness.
They requested to be part of the program?
Yes.
It's not that they were identified as perhaps needing some coaching?
Right. So we were looking at this as sort of a good-to-great coaching model as opposed to a deficit model where you need help and therefore, we're going to give you a coach because you're not performing. If that's the case, we work on that internally and we think that we make good decisions on getting those people ready to be tenured. And at that point, we feel like they're strong administrators. So at this point, it's really a good-to-great model. People, how can we support people to continue to get better? With that, that's what we know from this study that Kuzis and Posner have done is when they have surveyed lots of leaders, find that the best leaders are three times more effective with folks than compared to the group that they identify as the worst leaders. Their study. And so we think it's going to be interesting to follow this. I'm intrigued by it and I think it'll be a way that we continue to work on that leadership development and help people keep getting better.
This is new, right? This is not something I've heard before.
No. I've been doing a secret pilot with myself. So I didn't tell you about it.
And telling me all the copy of generations. We've noticed you've been getting better.
Thank you, good. So how can we quantify that? Right. I was learning about it a couple of years ago and then I thought, hey, that would be fun to do. Let me just see if I like this. And I sort of had enjoyed it and thought, wow, the learning can be really powerful. Why don't I bring this to the administrative team? And why don't we pilot something? I think this... I think our team, who's so thirsty to always learn. I mean, we have amazing administrators who always are willing to learn and we can only spend so much time with people. I often feel guilty that I'm not spending more time helping people learn and doing things like this. And why not have a different perspective than my perspective or Jen's perspective? Let people bring in some new outside knowledge.
So are these... Oh, sorry. Go ahead. Are the coaches in academia? Are they education coaches or are they just professional coaches?
Yeah, so most of them have experience in education. There are coaches who only work or have worked in industry. Two of the coaches are people who... You know, one of them is a professor at Teachers College. Another one does work in education a lot, but they also work with people outside in the private sector. But all of the coaches have either worked in or have experience in education.
Do they come here?
Most of them come here. But there is one coach, for example, who's on the West Coast. And so we do phone coaching. But most of them like to do it face-to-face. So most people will travel and set up appointments and meet here.
I wonder if they would come in the beginning of the year and then come at the end of the year and be able to see there's more energy, there's more talent, there's more... Like if they're hitting their three main targets.
Right, right.
It'd be great to, where we're back at the end of the year to see how it went.
I'll keep updating you.
I think this kind of thing is really important. I mean, there's been so many HR studies that show that people don't leave jobs because of the money. People stay at jobs and are attracted to employers because of the development opportunities that are offered to them. It's one of the biggest reasons. So I think that it's so important that we continue to offer this type of thing to our leaders.
Yeah, that's true with all employees, administrators, or teachers. And we have a lot of faculty, for example, who's around mid-career at this point. And so we keep talking about ways to engage them in learning. And same with our administrative team. People want to keep learning. You know, good adults in positions want to keep getting better. And how do we provide that opportunity in a way that's non-threatening? And I want this to not be non-evaluative, meaning it's not part of their formal evaluation process. Because I want it to be an honest learning for them as opposed to, I'm being evaluated on this, so I have to pretend I'm learning something and show that I'm getting better.
Right, but we do want, as Laurie said, we want to evaluate the program.
Sure, we're spending money on it. So I do want to know that it is having value added to it.
I think for me, the most important part of it is the reflection. So with reflection comes growth. And we are meeting with administrators so many times throughout the year. But when do they have opportunities to take their own time for reflection? And that is a built-in opportunity for them to work on that. We don't... There isn't a lot of time for that. I mean, they're very busy. And it's one of the most crucial things they need to be doing.
It was discipline around the process of continuous improvement. Kind of what it does.
You have to work at learning and that's something...
Going to the gym, of course.
Yeah.
When are they... Are they doing this after...
The leadership gym.
Do they do this after work?
They could do it whenever they're...
During the workday?
They can do it during the work if they can schedule that time. We said it's up to you whenever it's convenient for you and your coach to do it.
We don't have administrators who need to live by that budget, so... And it's not a huge time commitment. But just an hour?
One hour a month is generally... Some are meeting two times a month at the start of the year.
It's an intriguing model because it feels like it would be very successful and dovetail into our succession planning if we're identifying potential leaders and enriching them and giving them this basically, you know, cheerleading sort of coach. I like that. I like that model a lot.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Tim.
Whatever.
And Jim?
Just a brief update on some of our building projects. The high school theater, as you know, we're working on that. We are on schedule. The seating is to be arriving within the next week or two. Take another week or two to install that. But we're still on schedule for the November opening, which is good news there. Transportation facility. Those of you that were on the tour saw the bus wash facility, which is open and operating now. We still have some punch list issues with our HVAC contractors. Steve Thompson is working very hard to get those resolved for us. Hopefully, we can continue with this contractor and get them resolved and close this project out. That's our goal, get it closed out as quickly as possible. Field and track and high school windows. We have submitted a letter of intent to the state education department and have received project numbers on those. So that's good news. The architect is working on the design and we hope to have a submission to the state in November. And then we'll probably pay... You can pay a fee and fast-track these projects. So we probably will do that because we would want to be out to bid no later than the probably March time period for the field so we can get started immediately as soon as school is over. And also the restroom, the outdoor bathroom between the middle school and Wampus. We have that design almost done now. And that will be submitted also in the November time period. So we're on schedule with these projects and moving right along with them. And then the other note, Neraki Smith. Our auditor is going to be here October 9th to meet with the audit committee and then a brief board presentation on our annual audit. And as I mentioned last time, we don't expect to see any surprises here.
A big thank you, Steve and his staff. Again, the schools and their spick and span are beautiful for our children.
One more note, you know, there were some air conditioning questions that came our way in the first two weeks of school. Gratefully so. It was very hot. And Steve and I are... We met many times last year with Jim to look at whether or not we're going to be able to do something with a cogenerator and increase our amperage in different buildings. So we're still continuing those conversations and we're meeting again this month. And parents...
Did the kid graduate?
Parents were... Oh, our cogenerator kid, yeah, he did. I think he would come back if we asked him to. He's awesome. I want him to work here a little bit.
Belong to him.
Yeah, John Millitt. He was great. So we're continuing to have those conversations. And actually, we're now breaking it down to the point that in our next meeting, we're going to be looking at what is not air-conditioned. Many of our buildings are air-conditioned in new wings or in pockets, but not necessarily all classrooms. So we'll really start to take an inventory of that and price that out so that, you know, somewhere in the three-plus-year horizon, we might be able to make sure. And I know people say, oh, it's six days, it's 10 days a year.
But it's during the big testing time.
It's hard. It's really difficult for us, for the kids and the teachers in those classrooms, so...
I would think, especially young kids, they have allergies and all that, too.
Yeah, and you know, you're moving people into classrooms that are air-conditioned in sharing spaces and it's not ideal. So we'll be costing that out and seeing where we can get started. Thank you.
Good to hear that. Would it make sense to look at the portable air conditioners? I don't know how long they work.
It's that our amperage can't handle it. It's sort of like we bought an 1850s home and we're trying to put central air in it.
Right.
Low power.
Yeah. So we have to look at our electrical capacity.
Because you're right, it is a shame to go and spot something that's only going to be used through this year. But those days are bad.
You know, there are other thoughts, schools have thought also on air-conditioning classrooms in that, you know, some of these classrooms that are on bottom levels of buildings, it's more secure to keep your windows closed if you have filtered air that's going in there. So, you know, there are other things even other than just the climate. It's a security thing, too.
That's true.
And maybe nobody was listening, so... It's okay, the board needs to hear it.
So to board reports. For the president's report, just three items. First, just a reminder that the School Board Association meeting's coming up in New York City, but it's in late October, if anybody's interested. The second is a Westchester Fund and School Board Association event, which I think should be pretty informative. Regent Johnson is coming to speak in mid-October. So that's a second thing, just to invite everybody to attend. And then lastly, I was invited through the Westchester Fund and School Board Association and then superintendent was invited through superintendent association, I think, to a meeting that was held in White Plains today. And it was a meeting about the salt deductibility issue. There are folks in the assembly in the Westchester delegation, Amy Pollan and Dave Buckwald, who are trying to speak to municipalities, to school districts about potentially the submission of comments during the period during which the IRS accepts comments on this potential rule. And there is a law firm that has been, I'd say, appointed by them, in essence, to kind of work with different entities that are interested. And so in that regard, although we got, you know, some high-level information, they're going to be sending some information hopefully to us, which we would share with everybody. And then to the extent that it is something we want to discuss, it would have to be the next meeting because there is a deadline in October. So we will share any information we have with the board and then we can decide whether this is something we want to discuss as at the next meeting. And anybody else have any committee updates or any updates?
I went to the first Byram Hills Education Foundation meeting. As we all know, this year, we're all splitting those meetings